Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming tonight. I would like to call to order the Centerville Board of Education meeting for Monday, September 27, 2021. Call or roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Here.
Mrs. Dernbaugh.
Here.
Dr. Rohr.
Here.
Megan Sparks.
Here.
Mr. Schreier.
Here.
Item number three, which the board is pointing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four on the agenda, a motion to approve the agenda's presentment, please.
Delect.
Call or roll, please.
Mr. Dahl.
Yes.
Mrs. Dernbaugh.
Yes.
Dr. Rohr.
Yes.
Megan Sparks.
Yes.
Mr. Schreier.
Yes. Item number five, hearing of the public. As Dr. Henderson mentioned, if you are interested in addressing the board, please come to the microphone, state your name and address, and the board will listen to all you speak, but generally not engage in discussion or dialogue at this time. Batters requiring follow-up will be directed to Dr. Henderson. Individual board members can always be contacted for a set meeting appointment, and written correspondence can be mailed to the board office. Anyone like to address the board? Seeing no one, oh, yes, sir.
Hello, Mr. Schreier. Thank you for testing. This is good for everyone.
I think so, yeah, thanks.
Thank you so much. So my name's Brandon, and I live at 1386 Amber Road. I wanted to come here tonight to express my disappointment with the cowardice of anyone who would support a face masking requirement for children. I also wanted to share these statements and points of support of this position. I'll start with two statements that were given prior to the usage of masks as a political tool early last year. First, March 2020, the WHO stated that if you do not have any respiratory symptoms, if you do not have to worry about a mask, it needs to allow masks to give you a false feeling of protection and can even be a source of infection. Second, in May 2020, Dr. Fauci stated there's no reason to be walking around with masks. Third, a Danish study on mask usage in 2020 found no statistically significant difference in front virus infection rates between maskers and non-maskers across the population of 3,000 people. Fourth, the 2021 MetaRx study on COVID mitigation practices, COVID rates in schools reporting on data from three different states included, quote, "We did not find any correlations with mask mandates." In other words, mandating masks have no significant effect on COVID transmissibility across students in those schools. I can continue citing, but I only have 30 minutes, and as I understand. So I'll say that ultimately, there are no robust peer-reviewed randomized control trials that would improve the quality of masks are effective in inhibiting the flow of the coronavirus or other influenza-like illnesses. Moreover, there is data to show their potential harm to children. For example, a massive German study where parents reported side effects of masking children for over three hours a day on average resulted in the parents, over 50% of the parents reporting that their child experienced one of the following symptoms: irritability, headache, difficulty concentrating, and less happiness. So given that information, I'm confused about why we are forcing these non-friendly students to be needlessly frustrated and incapable. I'm concerned that our school boards have become intoxicated with the form of progressive liberalism that has held them on doing whatever it can to make life miserable and confusing for young people. The school board superintendent have the ability to liberate children from being easily muzzled up around the dogs just to come to school, but for whatever reason, they've advocated all semblance of science and responsibility with regard to this policy. Webster's dictionary assigns child abuse or defines child abuse as a tendency to inflict physical or emotional mistreatment or injury on a child purposely, or through negligence or neglect, and often on a regular basis. Based on this definition and facts, I would posit that those in this room who support masking are healthy child or illicit child abuse. Mandatory masking has no scientific or moral basis to stand on, and this policy must be removed immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address the board? Seeing no one, we will go to item number six on the agenda, which are the board and administrative reports. Dr. Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Schreier. We have four brief reports tonight. The first one is by Mrs. Sparks, who will legislate on data.
No, not this month, I think. I've got a pretty good feeling we'll have one again next month when they return in session. And students also do not have a report signed, but they will next month.
Okay, so next month we'll look forward to the legislative report, and our students will have a report as well. So next, we're going to go to our treasurer's report, so Laura Silver will take it from there.
Good evening. Last month, or, excuse me, last week, at our work session, we extensively went over our financial plan for the new year, and so I wanted to just recap that again for tonight. So we've been working for months on our fiscal year 2022 financial master plan. Centerville City Schools puts together a 10-year financial master plan instead of the ODE mandated five-year forecast. We still do the five-year forecast because it is a requirement, but we like to take a look internally and then with the board at a 10-year plan. And the reason for that is because it allows us a little bit longer financial planning in terms of when we potentially need to take a look at letting requests for future needs. We also, instead of accounting, the five-year forecast is based on accounting, so it looks at purchase services and supplies, those are accounting levels. We take a look at department budgeting instead, and so we're concerned more with, is it a business services, is it transportation, is it curriculum expenses? We look at a budget or a department-level budgeting instead of worrying about the accounting. So again, we still translate everything into the ODE requirement that's necessary, but we look at a little bit of a different plan than just the normal five-year forecast. One of the things I wanted to just mention before we look at the numbers is personnel costs. One of the questions that I've had and that we get periodically is, why do we spend 90% of our budget, our general fund budget, on personnel costs when other districts are down into the 80s, sometimes 85, sometimes 82, even as low as 80? Why are our costs, from a percentage standpoint, why are they higher than what other districts spend? And a lot of that is because we have a permanent improvement fund, a helping permanent improvement fund, that takes care of a lot of our expenses that other districts are spending out of the general fund. So whenever we purchase buses, when we look at our HVAC purchases and upgrades, any of our technology infrastructure-type purchases, we do that out of our permanent improvement fund, and that does not show up on the five-year forecast. The five-year forecast is just the general fund. So again, just to recap some of the numbers and some of the assumptions that are going into our numbers, from a revenue standpoint, our tax base continues to be strong. We're using a 1% calculation for reconstruction, and this is very consistent with what the district has seen over the last several years in terms of historical figures. We do have, in 2023, the emergency levy, it's a $9.5 million emergency levy that is set to expire. We do plan to be coming to the board in the coming months about a renewal for that, and so the numbers that we're showing you is assuming that that renewal is approved and moves forward. From a state funding standpoint, we have a new funding model that's in place. We're still not seeing that funding model from ODE yet. I anticipate that to come in October. But the concept of being funded where students are educated is a big part of that new model. And so instead of a student that maybe opens roles to another district, or a student that chooses an community school or an online option, we get a little bit of funding for those students now, or as of last year, we get a little bit of funding for those students, and then we pay out to whichever district that they're going to or school they're going to. Take regional STEM schools as an example, Ohio Virtual Academy, those are some of the types of schools that some of our residents' families choose for their students. So instead of having that revenue for the student and then the expense for that student, it's now going directly to that educational organization. And so we're actually going to show a drop in our state funding, but we're also going to have decreased expenses as well. So since we're not being funded according to that model yet, we use the simulations the state provided to us over the summer, because that's the best information we have today. So once we see the new formula, once we see what our numbers are going to be, I will obviously report to you if there are any major changes in our state funding. From an expense standpoint, salaries and benefits, again, that makes up the majority of our budget. We do have negotiations settled through fiscal year 2024, and those are factored into the numbers. And then operational expenses, for the most part, our budgets, I feel, have been restored to the fiscal year 19 level. We've had about two years of reduced expenses out of our general fund because of the pandemic, and we're a little unclear how that would go, if we would see increased expenses or if anything would go down. And because we've received a lot of federal funding, we're still receiving federal funding, we had savings in our general fund, especially last year, we saw a little bit in fiscal year 20 as well. But so budgets, for the most part, from a department standpoint, are back up to our fiscal year 19 levels. And then finally, the numbers, again, you saw this last week. This will be available on the website, you can get that posted out there. But in fiscal year 21, we have a surplus of $4 million that we were able to build with cash balance. That's normal in terms of a levy cycle, so we had passed a 2019 levy. And so it's normal that the revenues jump and then we have a surplus and we add to our cash balance for usually at least a year, hopefully a couple of years. Fiscal year 22, we're showing, which is the current school year, ending June 30, '22 will be the fiscal year end. We're showing as an estimate, again, it's a projection as of today, deficit spending of $1.1 million. That is not a very large percentage in terms of our full budget, and so I'm optimistic that we'll come in better than that, and we'll hopefully break even and maybe even have a little bit of surplus again in '22. It's a little too early, you know, for us to say that will happen for sure, but, you know, we're a little bit conservative with our department years. We do that on purpose because we want to make sure that we don't go the other direction and have to report to you that we deficit spent when we thought we would not deficit spend. And so that is my report tonight, unless you have questions. Again, we did talk at length about this in detail last week.
I have a question on the funded where education. They're going to have the money put directly to those schools. Is it going to be the small amount that we get from the state, or is it going to be the large amount that came away from us now?
I can't say for sure. I think it's going to be based on whatever the state funding level is for that particular district. So if it's an open and roll district that maybe receives $3,000 per student, it should be closer to what they receive as a district. I believe for the community schools and STEM schools and places like that, it will be probably the full $6,000. And so I'm a little unclear on that yet, because like I said, I haven't seen any actual numbers from ODE. No, I haven't seen any of the statements they put out there for us to look at on a monthly basis or not at all. So I can update on that later. We can dive into that and kind of try to figure that out.
Right now, we're getting how much per student?
We get about $1,800 per student.
In most cases, we're putting out over $6,000.
I'm sorry.
In most cases, we're putting out over $6,000.
That's correct. When students leave, the whole amount goes out.
Okay.
Laura, is it fair to say that the surplus in 2021 is somewhat affected by pandemic funds?
It's a few, it's two or three things. I would say that it's, number one, we had a full phase in, a full year reflection of the levy passage from November of 19, so that's number one. Number two, yes, the pandemic and the federal funding that we received, we diverted a lot of expenses in terms of curriculum, some of our custodial supplies and things like that. We shifted those to the brands that we received. Those were the main things. And then also, we made reductions. And so if you remember, we hit many reductions at the start of fiscal year 21 as well. So it's really a combination of several things.
Thank you.
Laura, you talked about the reduction in state funding because of the funding where educated, and then the offset on the expenses. We see that under the student services line item, is that right? Is that where all of that comes from?
That's correct. Thanks.
Thank you.
The other two items on the agenda is the appropriations. Do you have an appropriation resolution that I just want to mention before we get to that terms of the voting? This is a statute order requirement with county auditor, that you have to file our permanent appropriations by September 30. This is for all funds, and so the general fund is on there, but then also any other fund that they have as a district, student activity funds, plans, youth service, every other dollar that we account for is here as well. And so it's a high-level budget, again, it's an audit requirement, it's required by the county auditor, and so I ask for your approval of that tonight when we get to that part of the agenda. And then also, under the financial section, is the insurance renewal of Anthem. Dr. Henderson and I and Janice Seifman, my office coordinator, we've been on several Zoom meetings over the last 16 months, I guess. It's been several meetings where we talk about, you know, what's happening with our claims specifically in healthcare market in general, and we work to come to a recommendation to you then on the insurance renewal. We were at 5% last year, 7% the year before. We've stayed within budget, not under budget, and our claims have been relatively low, and so we're, Dr. Henderson and I, are comfortable with a 2% recommendation to you tonight.
Laura, just to point out there, I mean, when we went self-funded, at that point, Anthem and most insurance companies were raising the, made it to upper double-digit numbers during the rate. So when we talk about 7%, 5%, and 2%, that has nothing compared to maybe we were not self-insured. So by going self-insured, we have literally saved that payer's hundreds of thousands of dollars by doing this. So again, I applaud you guys in your office for the team to do all that.
We've been working, we've had many conversations, Dr. Henderson and I have, about trying to find a balance where we keep those renewals just stable. We did have a period where we had some zeros and a 2% for like three years straight, and then the next year we had either a 10% or 20%, and then the area that was the other in whichever direction. One was 10, one was 20%. And we wanted not to see that. And so, you know, even though our balance and our fund is very healthy and we're happy with where that balance is, we still felt that 2% was appropriate, because again, we will need to try to level that off and not have those spikes in the future. And so that was justification behind our recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. The next report will be given by our directors of elementary and secretary, Kirk Mill, Sri Palmit, and Pati Jello. They did a detailed presentation last week, and they're going to give you that summary tonight itself.
Thank you. The reason we're in front of you at this point in time is to talk a little bit about the state report cards that will be out next month, that they're released a little more time. The state is releasing these this year because they want us to use this information to help plan the improvement and recovery. And so if you remember, in 2020, when the shutdown happened, there were no state tests, and so we had a year without those. And so some of the measures on the report card are impacted by, and so we're kind of going to walk you through what measures will be there in this one.
So just as a reminder, the state report card will be coming out. We won't necessarily have any ratings, so we're used to seeing those letter grades on the different components of the report cards. None of those will be rated, but there will be some data on all of those pieces, and we want to walk through, just a reminder of what all these pieces of the state report card are.
So the improving act risk K3 readers, each year we give diagnostic assessments within the first 30 days of school. So entering kindergarteners who haven't been in school are the first ones who should take those, and then each year, we take them again, beginning in first grade, beginning in second, beginning in third. That measure looks at the kiddos that were not on track from the beginning of one year to the beginning of the next year, and see how many of them we can get on track within that year or year.
Graduation rate is on there every year, and it's just a reminder that graduation rate is always kind of a year in the rears. So the information that'll be coming out on our graduation rate will actually be the class of 2020, and then the five-year graduation rate will be about the class of 2019. Prepare for Success. Prepare for Success is primarily a high school measure. It looks at AP participation, ACT, SAT information, post-high school, post-secondary choices, many of those type of metrics, and there will be information on there. It's a, it'll come up a little bit as we talk about some of the results from this past year.
And one of the things, as we've talked about over the years, that happens with the report card, is the achievement measures are used multiple times in different ways. So that students take the state test, and then that passage rate or different metrics from that same test are used in different ways. And so one of those is achievement, so what percentage of students are proficient and above. The other one is progress, and that's looking, they have a mathematical equation where they compare year to year and see if the children, students in different groups are making that growth. And then there's gap closing, and so that's when you look at some of our subgroups and looking at how far the average passage in those compares to the average passage of all students, and looking to close those differences. So those items all have, are based on the proficiency rates and different components of that testing.
So as we look to the testing that occurred last school year, it's important to remember that we did have testing in the spring of 2021, we didn't have any testing in the spring of 2020. So as we try to unpack some of this information, you know, locally or here for us, we're going back, sometimes looking at two years ago. But, you know, obviously, the big questions in education over the last 18 months is how has, how has the learning during the pandemic impacted students? Well, nationally, we know that mathematics across the board was impacted greater than English language arts as just a kind of a general trend across the, or I'm sorry, across the nation.
And in Ohio, they did a study comparing the tests across the state, and what they found was that the English language arts proficiency rates from 2019 to 2021 declined about 8%. So about 8% less students were proficient. And the mathematics rates proficiency declined about 15%. And that was across the state. Here in Centerville, our, we, in almost every, in most grade levels, we did better than them. So our students were not quite as impacted as much as that 8% and 15%. There are a couple of factors, which we get to this next bullet. So across the state, 7th through 12th graders saw the largest declines in proficiency and way more than 3rd through 6th graders, and that holds true in our data for sure.
Yeah, we saw, we saw that 7th and 8th grade were the most impacted cohorts. We're going to talk about some of the actions we're putting into place, but 7th and 8th grade were impacted. In some cases, our high school was the least impacted. As a matter of fact, one of our tests, English II, which is 10th grade English, actually improved a percentage point from our last time we had a state test, so. But everybody was impacted. I mean, I think when we look at that, every student, every educator, all of us, as we tried to navigate, different cohorts were impacted differently. What sometimes is not reflected, or you see right away in the data, and I'll use an example of American history here at the high school, you know, some things that impact the outcomes maybe aren't necessarily pandemic-related. We had an additional 160 students take AP US History last year. Well, those students aren't engaging in that state test, they're engaging with the AP, which is a much more rigorous test. And so that impacts that average, or I'm sorry, the proficiency rate there. So there are some nooks and crannies that we kind of got into when we unpacked that at the work session, but there are different variables in some of these tests.
And this is one measure. There are lots of, lots of metrics that teachers and principals and we use across the district to help look at growth, look at achievement, and look at across time and across the course and across the year, how students are growing and where they are. We are taking many action steps with that information to continue to inform our first step score.
So really, we wanted to focus on and talk to the board again about some of the things that we have in place already. This summer, as we looked at how we would try to, what we're calling beat this rebound with our students and our staff, we kind of turned to the work of the experts that are out there, John Hattie.
Doug Fisher and Nancy Frye have taken his work and looked at how it applies to the situation of the pandemic. And so some of the pieces that really help us think about how to maybe the most effective and efficient as we're moving forward. And so a lot of that is around thinking about collaborative practices. So we know when we work together as educators, that allows us to move forward faster. And so those are some pieces that we're working to implement across the district and in our building, so we have collaboration and really digging in and putting our heads together and just all the problems.
And we, and we'll talk about some more specific actions here, but we have tried to streamline this response. We have a new evaluation system that's come in with the state. We're streamlining practices within this leading rebound concept with our administrators and teachers and their goal processes and their observations, their focus areas in those observations, but as well as carving out time for our teachers to receive additional training, additional collaboration time. So this is all in response, and again, around, you know, research-based practices.
And really working toward that idea of learning loops, so taking children from where they are, wherever that is at this point in time, and moving them forward. And so really focusing. And so this all started, actually, last spring when we were figuring out which children would be invited to summer intervention. So we've had a robust summer intervention program in this district for a number of years, but due to the pandemic, we were able to up that a bit and provide transportation. We also extended to kindergarteners, so we serve kindergarteners of first graders up PBS, and then second through seventh graders in math and reading at Watts.
And we created a transition program for most at-risk eighth-grade students who actually spent their time here at Centerville High School this summer as a, you know, transition to the high school. Mr. Carroll and his staff did an awesome job, our counselors came in and kind of met with those students, gave them tours, and that was, that was a four-week program where they got to tour and get activated to the high school. Our high school summer intervention program focused on credit recovery and was highly successful in recovering those credits, and I think really instilling some positivity back to school for some of those students who were most at risk.
We've already completed our first round of math testing this year. One of the ways that math testing is different than some of the other assessments we give is we get results immediately. And so it is information that the teachers can act on and diagnose and be able to see holes, and we get that fast immediately. You know, with the state test, we take them in May margin, April, but we do not get the results until the middle of the summer, like in July. And so the action, plus when the students are already gone, and so the teacher has to reflect on what they've accomplished. And so this is something that's more real-time that we're able to act on. We were able to expand that, we actually expanded to kindergarten and then up into the high school with some math testing.
And yeah, the map testing was integrated into many of our freshman courses. Out of the one, again, that eighth-grade cohort, that was, we know was impacted. Many of those teachers and courses implemented map testing, and has really allowed us to start digging into where students have specific needs in their learning.
Again, part of what's happening as those assessments come back, there are other ones that are happening in the classroom around word study and all kinds of different things, but the teachers are looking at that data and talking to one another and looking for commonalities and pieces where they group children and provide instruction, and that happens through collaboration on their team, whether it's a teaching team, a content or grade-level team, or at their building level, and it's exactly.
New to this year, we have, and this is through the whole programming, curriculum teams that are looking specifically at needs as they relate to the state standards and the assessments associated with that, and creating really action steps. So these are schools of teachers at the secondary level, which I work, you know, we have a team, a team of math teachers with math assessments and the math standards, and prescribing very direct actions for the colleagues, and we're working through the implementation process of those actions. Actually, Brandon.
And as you're aware of, we are involved in the strategic planning process, which has a layer of that that's going to be all about instruction and teaching and learning. And so we're excited to coincide that with other efforts that are happening. At the elementary, we are, we've entered into a partnership to gain some training around the multi-tier systems of support. What that is, is that you might be familiar with RTI. It's when children engage in some difficulty, we provide intervention. Most of that happens in the classroom with their teacher, but then sometimes we have to add layers of that. That all, that intervention is to help us have less children need special education. And so we are kind of hitting the reset button and going back to kind of square lines to get some background training. And that will take us several years to get through, but we just have our initial training session that will meet your principles as well.
We are continuing to use the Panorama surveys and, you know, just a short note on that. We had mentioned at the work session, we'll be getting some more information to you about that. But, you know, really, this is one of our glimpses at kind of more of a whole child assessment. How are they doing? How are they feeling? Not only, you know, academically, but then where they are and their feelings around school. We know that in order for students to be, to learn effectively, they need to feel safe, valued in their environment. And so this gives us an opportunity to get information on that and share that with our teachers.
We have ongoing professional learning actually happening live this week. Tomorrow is our, Wednesday is some for, for math and math, but we are implementing new math programs. And so there's training that goes along with both of those. As well as we, across this summer, we had many teachers engage in some summer institutes that were helping them think about the situation they're heading into, this idea of school as we're in the pandemic, in the middle of it, and working our way through. And so lots of learning that continues to go on for our educators.
And we, you know, lastly, should we mention this? We are implementing a math program that is more full implementation of math programs that are more strictly aligned to the state standards. And that's what the training is happening around that. It's, it's very eye-opening for all of us as we continue to integrate that program, implement that program with having, you know, our, our previous program had diverged a little bit from the state standards. And the pandemic did make it easier to implement programs that we had had actually selected prior to fully implement that and provide training around that. So we're excited about really the output from implementation, full implementation of those math programs. Part of that also includes just bolstering our support in math. That means something a little different at the elementary level. At the, at the secondary level, we have put in some courses for students that we have identified as struggling. And so some students like at Centerville High School are taking two periods of math. One is like their algebra class, it's our connections program, and then they'll take the connections, math, algebra morning to help support the learning that they're doing in math classroom simultaneously. They also have now a two support as well as math support.
We were able to bring, we had cut in the, when we were making reductions, the math support at first grade. And we were able to bring that back to both buildings, knowing that we need to be, be positive in that.
I think we're hopeful that with all of these things happening, it sounds like people are busy, they are, our teachers are busy. They have worked very hard through the challenges of the last, you know, eight, 12 months, two years. And, but we're also hopeful that consistent years, consistency for students and staff, you know, be able to leave this area.
Question. Since we're leading rebound, when will be able to look at that and tell us whether or not we're succeeding? And are they going to be next small?
No. So, well, I would say our new math program gives us real-time data. We, the math, we just gave the math growth assessment, we get information right back on that. I think we have more access to more real-time data right now than we ever have. Unfortunately, that, you know, there's no reporting phase to state on that. But we're already seeing some of the benefits of having that data and being able to work with our staff on response right away.
Lexismat, how about the other?
On ELA, we have support.
So in elementary, there are many assessments that happen across the course of each, each month of the year. And so those are all things that we have targets where kids need to be and we're watching for growth towards those targets. And then looking, having conversations, talking about upping amounts of small groups and those kinds of things if we're not. And so obviously, we're going to have way more checked in since we've moved across this year and kind of looking at data. A lot of times that data is handled in the classroom level, but because we're all in it at this point in time and concerned and looking for different ways, there's going to be more conversations at building levels and conferences.
We've heard a lot of suggestions that children, because of not being in person, we call it a mask, a lot of other reasons, children are going to be way behind, they're going to be caught up, it's going to ruin their education, ruin their life. I just want to make sure that we can encourage our parents and our community to understand that, no, we're watching this. We're working on it, and we don't have to wait until 10 years from now to find out whether or not we've been successful in the rebound.
We have a couple metrics already. So when we look at the children who've taken our diagnostic assessments for reading at kindergarten, first, second, third grade, we actually have less kids needing ramps this year than we did in 2019. The other piece is third graders have that third grade reading guarantee, which is back in play this year. With the first assessment that they can score a passing score, we had 54% of students actually achieve that. And that's a year-end measure for third grade examiners. So starting right away in September, we had that many children who are beyond on track. They've actually met that, that criteria. So we do have children that are struggling, but we also have many children who grew in spite of the conditions and have our, it's our challenge to meet the needs of all of them.
Right. We've had in the past with the third grade reading, similar type of results, and we are able to identify those who need assistance, more assistance, and in what groups they are, so that will continue. And hopefully, we can find out by the spring, how successful that process will develop. If you're willing to run ahead, just hear what you have to say in a second.
A couple of things to me. You know, I know in some of the presentations I was looking, one of the things you pointed out is that this is one metric that you're looking at. And it's important to look at many metrics, not just the state report card and say, oh, look, this is what it shows. I mean, you really do have to look at a lot of different metrics that go into quote success of our schools and the excellence of our schools. Consistency, I know that's one of the things you talk about. Obviously, our goal has been to keep these kids in school five days a week, and we're trying to do that as best we can, obviously. My, my question to you is, when folks see the report card and they're going to see the negative numbers, and they're going to start saying, look, your schools are going down, your excellence is going away, you're doing a terrible job, we need to make changes. How do you respond? I mean, what are you going to say based on these numbers today?
I would say that there's also some trend data leading up to, in places, right? And, and again, each level and each set of standards, assessments, kind of tell a little bit of a different story at times. But there is trend data that said we were, we were moving in the right direction. Again, I believe that there's plenty of positive if you start looking a little bit more back, a little bit further. We can see that we were moving. I think that we also have access right now to information at a much greater rate. So we have our future element also a little bit more, and allows us to continually react to that at a quick rate.
One of the pieces that we think about the pandemic, one of the reasons that we didn't see the growth or that we saw decline in achievement is that we weren't able to get through as much material as, as we need to to cover the standard, like to get through that material. And so one of the, one of the big things that may go impact of learning math is the new program because we just weren't covering the standards to the depth and with the resources that we're fully behind. And the other layer in elementary, when you look at science, is our content materials are more than 12 years old. And so we are in the process of looking at those new materials this year too. And so that's another layer. When you look at our, our results, when you look over time, we do, as we, as children are with us longer. So if they're here, we're kind of playing the long game. And so if you look year to year, sometimes you don't see as huge a growth. But then as you look over time, we are getting children to that third grade guarantee. We're getting them to graduation and all those pieces. And so a lot of times, you know, that, that growth of the younger ages is complicated by lots of different pieces. And so trying to tease all of those out as we move across time is what our teachers are expert at. And so we're looking at growth, and our growth is sometimes not measured. We're trying to get kids to be more independent when they have to take a test and the stress that sometimes happens there. You know, all of those pieces go into the teaching, the fact that we have to do it and helping kids be adjusted to those pieces.
Again, it's important, I think, we say, when you look at these numbers, when the report card comes out, you know, when we look at our numbers, you want to look at it in relation to the rest of the state. And this isn't just our school, this is almost every school district. Are there one or two that are doing better, and those are the ones that'll keep funding and say, look, you know, Mason did great, we did terrible. But the reality is compared to the state, we have done a little better than the average. Everyone is not surprised, I don't think on this board, that we were seeing drops based on what's been happening in this last year and a half. And I think when kids aren't in school, you know, it is going to have an impact, you should note that about it. But the key is, you know, what are we doing to, what do you lead the rebound? And obviously, we're taking this seriously, we're doing the interventions, we're doing the work. So we're not, we're not sort of putting up blinders and saying, oh, this is nothing we got to do. When you talk about the math program too, it's important to be, you know, we had talked about doing this like a year and a half, two years ago. And the reason we didn't do it was because the state took away tons of money from us and asked us to give it back. And that money was going to be used to change our curriculum. So we had to wait until we were in a financially better position to do that. So, you know, it's not all just this board and our administration has made these issues for us. I mean, the state does make issues. Again, I'm not here to blame the state for everything, almost everything, but not everything. But the reality is, you still need funds and you still need to do this. And, you know, we have it now and if we're doing it, you're heading in the right direction. And I think it's good to get a quick response back in terms of testing and where we're going. And I would just encourage you when you get those positive things to let the public know so that they know we're heading in the right direction and things are going better.
We, just on that note, I mean, we, you know, one thing that shows up in a blip in the prepared for success, we had almost 1,000, I believe, more AP tests taken at the Central High School last year as a result of our equal opportunity schools initiative, which was to encourage more students to take AP courses. It's statistically shown that a student is twice as likely to graduate from college if they engage in one AP course while they're in high school. So for us to encourage them to take that and engage in that more rigorous content and assessment is beneficial to them. It's not necessarily playing the report card game. You know, I, we had 270 students take math at a year or two above their grade level in 7th and 8th grade. Those students passed at a 70, or I'm sorry, a 98% passage rate on the, on high school level math tests. That's not reflected in 7th and 8th grade. But it's not to say that we don't have work to do in all those places. We value all this data. It's all important. But when you start playing some games, like it becomes tricky, right? Sometimes it's kind of scale, you move kids from here to there. But we'll continue to work through this data and try to respond appropriately if we feel like we're heading in the right direction.
Thank you very much. Well, item number seven on the agenda must have gone to dust or something like that because there is no item number seven. So we're going to go to the action items on the agenda. We may appear to move quickly through these, but we discussed them at length last week and in previous months for what we're going to vote on. So, item eight is, are the treasurer's recommendations, 8A. Consider approving the August 2021 financial statements to include the monthly general fund rolling report, monthly cash reconciliation, monthly fund activity report, then and now purchase orders approved by administration, certified by the treasurer, and supported by board resolution totaling $134,137.36. And 8A5, the monthly cash reconciliation for July 2021. Do I have a motion, please?
No move.
Second.
Any discussion on 8A? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dernbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes. 8B. Consider approving the minutes of the following board of education meetings. August 30th, 2021 regular meeting, September 20th, 2021 special meeting work session.
Second.
No move.
Call the roll.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dernbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes. Item 8C. Consider approving the fiscal year 2022 permanent appropriations by fund totaling $156,744,874.
Move. Second.
Any discussion or questions or comments? Laura, could you touch on that for a little bit, place on 8C?
Yes.
Explain that.
Yes, this, this is appropriations that are required by the county auditor that we file once a year by September 30th, and then we usually do an amended revision by the end of the year. Again, county auditor requirement, and it includes all of our funds. And so included is the general fund, but then every other fund that we are custodians of, which is student activity funds, all of our grants, food service, permanent improvement funds, just to name a few.
Thank you. Any other discussion or comments on 8C? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dernbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes. Item 8B. Consider approving a resolution for a 2% increase to the Anthem employer employee medical insurance premiums for calendar year 2022. Laura just touched on that during her, her recommendations.
No move.
Second.
Any discussion or comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dernbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes. Item number nine are the superintendent's recommendations, 9A. Superintendent recommends the resignations as listed on Schedule A. The superintendent recommends the employment, change of employment status, or change of contract status for the certificated personnel listed on Schedule B for the salaries, programs, and on the effective dates given. The superintendent recommends the employment or change of employment status for the support staff personnel listed on Schedule C for the salaries, programs, and on the effective dates given. The superintendent recommends the employment of the personnel listed on Schedules D and B1 for supplemental contracts or extra duty assignments. And the superintendent recommends the granting of leads of absence for the personnel listed on Schedules E for the reasons and on the dates given. Do I have a motion, please?
No move. Second.
Any discussion on that, Ela? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dernbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes. Continuing on 9A. The superintendent recommends the employment of the personnel listed on Schedule D2 for supplemental contracts or extra duty assignments. Do I have a motion, please?
Second. Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Stay in.
Mrs. Dernbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes. Item 10 on the agenda. Consider approving the following transportation items. The acceptance of transportation responsibilities for the 2021, 2022 school year from the school districts and for the students listed, we've got it in our information pack. Any?
Second.
Any questions or comments on that?
I think there's nothing listed here because we do not want some members of the public to find out about these transportations and naming children. So that's why there's nothing listed on 9A.
Any other comments? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dernbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes. Item number 11, any other comments for the good of the order?
Jeff, I'd like to say something. Someone came up and was accusing us of some bad things today. I just want to read something. Dr. Anna Mezoff, who's chief of medical officer at Dayton Chalk Hospital, was on a news show the other day. I just want to read some, some numbers and statistics so it may help police understand. The question was. The question was, you know, it was basically, almost 60% of Ohio students are now in districts where they require masks. A few weeks ago, it was only 35%. And the question was, do you think, you know, what impact that will save? He said, there were two reports in terms of the spread of COVID in children in schools. If you have mask mandate, you are at half the COVID rate at a school which is unmasked. Another study showed that if you masked from the beginning of the school, you had an 8.4% chance of having an outbreak. If you masked after school started, 32.5%. And if you continue without a mask, 59.2% of the schools have had an outbreak in their schools. So I just want, again, this is not me, this is from Dr. Mezov at Dayton Show Hospital, where they're seeing, obviously, a tremendous increase in the number of pediatric cases that are coming through. Some significantly ill-requiring ventilation use and everything else. So I just wanted us to understand that the numbers do show that the masks are working in terms of controlling outbreaks in schools. That's all.
Thank you. Any other comments? Item 12, got a motion for adjournment, please?
No move.
Second.
Call the roll.
Mr. Dahl?
Yes.
Mrs. Dernbach?
Yes.
Dr. Rohr?
Yes.
Megan Sparks?
Yes.
Mr. Schreier?
Yes. We are adjourned. Thank you very much for coming to our item week.